We have engaged MIG as a consultant. They did our last housing, um, housing element as well. And they've been working with us. We have to do, um, three community meetings. We have done two previous meetings. And this is the final joint workshop with the Planning Commission and the Council to explain what, you know, what's, what's coming up, what's going on. There will be no action required tonight. This is purely inform for information. And if we could let Laura get through her presentation. If something's not clear about what she's saying, please stop and ask. But other than that, if you have questions about the whole thing, let's save it to the end because this can become very drawn out very quickly.
This is a Zoom meeting.
Yes.
So they can see us. Are we going to be able to see them?
I don't know.
I didn't hear that.
So you, you'll be able to hear her but not see her?
Okay.
Yes, it's a public, it's open to the public. And with that, Laura, are you good to go? I don't know about anybody else, but after years, Doc can't remember to turn on my microphone for Zoom. Okay, we'll get the audio set up in a minute. We'll go ahead.
I think we should all have them retaken because those are not great.
I can hear fine. This is John Nichols.
Will you ask me please? Are you there? Can you try speaking? So I'm not picking up on Zoom at all. No, she can see me. She's hearing me. Hearing her respond to me. I'm just going to try and put her on the speaker on the laptop. How about try one more time, Laura? Make some kind of a noise in this place.
Yes, can you hear me Conrad?
I can hear you. Can you guys hear if we put the speaker on this? Okay, let's try this. Put here and we can get the speaker up. Okay, will that go into the speakers here? Go ahead and say something, please.
Conrad, I've got my volume all the way up. Can you hear?
It worked. Perfect. We'll do it this way. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, you can, Laura.
No worries. Thank you Conrad. And Mr. Mayor, members of the Planning Commission, thank you for the opportunity to speak with you this evening. Since we're getting started a little bit late, what I'd like to do at Mayor's pleasure is to go ahead and power through the presentation and then have comments and questions after the presentation if that works fine.
Yes, ma'am, that's fine.
Okay, good. And I didn't know if the Mayor and the Planning Commission Chair needed to take role or if we can just go ahead and get started on the presentation.
No, I think we can get started.
Okay, thank you. My name is Laura Stetson. I am a principal with MIG. We've had the pleasure of working with the City of Loma Linda on several projects. And the project that we're going to be discussing this evening is the housing element. This is something that is required to be updated on a regular basis. So tonight, we'd like to talk to you about what the, what goes into a housing element, how we've engaged the community to date in this process, and to talk about the steps in the work program to get towards an adoption date of October 15th of this year, and certainly to take your questions on, on the housing element. Next slide, please. Next slide. The housing element is part of the general plan. Actually, can we back up? Thank you. It's part of the general plan. As you probably know, your general plan is updated about once every 20 years, but it's, the housing element is updated on a much more frequent basis as required by law. It's something that can be adjusted any time in between, but really the eight-year cycle is what's recommended. Next slide, please. And I'll just say next slide from here. The housing element is the only part of your long-range plan that does require review and certification by the state, by the State Department of Housing and Community Development, or HCD. Every jurisdiction in California, every city, every county, is required to have a housing element and to have the element certified by the state to be in compliance with housing law. For Loma Linda, and in fact, for the entire Southern California Association of Governments or SCAG region, the housing elements are due to be adopted by October 15th of this year. Next slide. The importance of the housing element really hinges on the law that goes back many, many years that was adopted, recognizing that, that housing is something of statewide importance and that every jurisdiction in California has a responsibility to allow for housing for all economic segments of the community. So this is something, again, that every community is required to do in recognition, going way back in time with the housing needs of the state, but even more critically right now as California faces a housing crisis, if you will. Next slide. The housing element has very prescribed content, things that must be in the element. We are required to look at what constraints there might be to housing development in Loma Linda from regulatory constraints to environmental constraints that you might have, to market conditions that might constrain housing. We're also looking at what the, the needs in the community are based on the demographics and housing market trends. The element then also identifies what the resources are to meet those identified needs and to report how the city has really made progress over the past eight years towards its housing goals. All of these are folded into a housing plan that indicates what Loma Linda plans to do to address housing needs over the eight-year period that essentially starts this year. Next slide. Part of the emphasis of the housing element is on addressing affordable housing needs. And so the question arises, what is considered affordable housing? Affordable housing is housing that is priced such that a household, that means everybody who's living in a house, pays no more than 30% of the combined household income for housing. So any household that is paying more than that 30% is considered to be cost burdened. And the reason this criteria is established is because if people are paying more than 30% for housing, that really starts to eat into the money they have available for other things, for, for quality of life, for medical care, for childcare, for entertainment. So that's why this standard is set by the federal government. In Loma Linda, 39% of households, either renters or home, home owners, experience some level of cost burden. Next slide. Just to get a perspective on what does that mean, what is a household income? Let's take, for example, a four-person household in Loma Linda earning between 51 and 80% of the average median income in the county of San Bernardino. So a four-person household earning $60,250 combined income means that, as shown at the bottom of the slide here, that they can roughly afford a mortgage or a rent of about $1,500 per month. And as the next slide might show, next slide, please. That means that, given that the median rent in Loma Linda is roughly $1,100, that they would be able to afford the median rent. But if you look at different types of professions, from a fast food cook to a registered nurse, this graphic shows that there are many types of, of jobs and professions of people working in the community who may not be able to afford that median rent. An auto mechanic would, a registered nurse, a schoolteacher, but people who are making roughly less than maybe $40,000 a year might not be able to afford that median rent in Loma Linda, and certainly would be challenged to be able to afford the monthly mortgage of about $2,500. And this, this data that I'm reporting to you probably doesn't tell you anything that you intuitively know, that it's expensive to buy, it's expensive to rent, and people do have to double up in, in many cases to be able to afford rents or borrow from their parents or find a really creative way to, to afford a mortgage in Loma Linda. Next slide. I'm going to switch topics for a minute because one of the key considerations of the housing element is for the city to accommodate not just affordable housing, but to accommodate a set number of housing units over this next eight-year planning period. The state starts with a very top-level process, top-heavy process, to estimate what the housing need is in California over a, a period of time. And so the state determines what the need is for each region of the state and develops something called the Regional Housing Needs Allocation Arena. And I apologize, that's probably the only acronym I'll, I'll use tonight. I'll try not to use too many others. But the, the number for the state is established. And then that, for the Southern California region, for the six-county region that makes up Southern California, other than San Diego, there is a need for 1.3 million, let me pause for a minute, 1.3 million housing units, that's rental and ownership, over the next eight years to meet both the pent-up demand for housing as well as housing projections moving forward. So that number through a very complicated process gets distributed among the jurisdictions in the six-county region. And the number for Loma Linda is 2,051 housing units over the next eight-year period. Slide. How does that compare to your, actually, let, let me skip this slide. It's a little too nerdy. I want to go just to the next slide to, to show you how this compares to your neighbors. This is not a number that's, it'd be correlated to the population directly, or the number of homes, housing units that you have today. So there's not a correlation. It's a, a matter of what has been the pent-up demand for housing? Is a jurisdiction considered to be jobs-rich and therefore not providing enough housing locally to meet the needs that are based on the, the employment in the community? And so a lot of factors go into this. And so as you see, a community like Ranji Kukamanga, which has a population of much greater than, than Loma Linda, does have a pretty steep arena, but as a percentage of its current number of housing units, it might be lower than what Loma Linda is providing. So if anybody wants to do some quick mouth on your phone or your calculator while you're sitting here, I, I just wanted to show this slide to show that, for example, Highland, which has a, a population that's probably twice the size of Loma Linda, has an arena allocation that's just, just a little bit more. So you can't, again, you cannot correlate this to population or the number of units today. It's a much more complicated process. These numbers are final and there is some, this is the number that we're going to be working with in your housing element to, to try to show that there's capacity over the next eight years for just over 2,000 units. Next slide. Actually, before I talk about this slide, let me mention that throughout the Southern California region, the numbers for this eight-year cycle are much, 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 much higher than they were for the period that, that ended in, ending in 2021. And every jurisdiction in Southern California is facing some very similar steep numbers. Just for comparison, just because I'm, I'm working in another community, Garden Grove in Orange County that has a population of 75, just to stun you, they have arena of about 19,000 units. So there are some really high numbers. I, I can't even tell you what Los Angeles County is. I think it's about 400,000, I'm sorry, City of Los Angeles, about 400,000 units. So you, you've got this number of just over 2,000. It's not just 2,051 housing units to plan for, but it's to plan for housing that meets the needs of various household income levels from very low to what's considered above moderate. So that you can see that roughly 30, well, about 40% are, are targeted towards the very low and low-income categories in the community, with the remaining being moderate and above moderate. So just under half for essentially what are, are market rate units and moderate or, or maybe just below market rate or just right in the sweet spot. Next slide. Oh, actually, before I go on, I want to, this is a really critical point at the bottom of the slide here, is those, just over 2,000 units is not a construction obligation. It is simply an obligation to provide zoning that could accommodate these units. The city certainly doesn't, is not in the business of building housing, and so is not obligated to ensure that these housing units are built, but simply to provide the opportunity for property owners and developers to achieve that number. Next slide. To meet the arena, it's not just about making sure that the zoning is in place, but the city can look at housing that is currently proposed and that will not have certificates of occupancy issued before June of, before the end of June in this year. So we're going to be looking at approved projects for housing for mixed-use developments, projects that are in the application pipeline today, and then, as well as vacant sites that could support housing, sites that might not be built to their full potential today. And something that Loma Linda really hasn't seen much of in the past are what are called accessory dwelling units or granny flats. And another acronym that I'll probably use is ADU, meaning accessory dwelling units. Three years ago, the, the legislature passed some laws that made it much easier to build accessory dwelling units in the community. And Loma Linda has seen an uptick in applications, given the fact that it is easier to, to get an application in and approved for ADUs. Next slide. This slide shows some examples of projects that are either under construction today or proposed or entitled, so that you can see of the, that 20, 2,000 units, almost a quarter are met today by projects that are either under, under construction or have been approved by the city and will be moving forward presumably. And, and then, as you can see at the bottom there, there's a, it's not just one ADU that's been approved. The city is going to be able to claim credit for about 167 accessory dwelling units over this, this eight-year, year planning period based on trends that you're seeing today. Next slide. When we're looking at sites, that vacant sites that might be able to support housing, we're somewhat constrained by the law on the criteria that can be used. So, you know, even if Loma Linda had a lot of vacant sites, we need to consider the fact because of Measure V, some may be constrained by topography and other limits on development. But we also need to look at what the size of the site is, how many units might be able to be built, what the ownership is, what's the, for project or sites that currently have development on them, but maybe it's aging development. What's the potential that that site might turn over and support housing? So these are the types of things that we're going to be looking at when we are doing the housing element update. I just want to pause for a minute. We're seeing a couple of questions come in through the chat, and when we get to the discussion period, I will open that up and, and try to respond to those per, per the Mayor and the, and, or Nichols' direction. Next slide, please. Some of the assumptions that we will be looking at when we are trying to determine where there might be appropriate sites for housing is what are the maximum densities that are allowed? And just, all things being equal, typically multifamily housing or, or more dense development is, is considered to be more affordable than single-family housing on large lots. So this diagram kind of shows you where different housing types or typologies might fit within this, this income range from market-rate houses to those that might meet what we might term workforce housing or affordable housing. And, and as the prior chart shows, you, you might have, you know, folks who are working at the hospital or in the local schools or in local businesses that might be considered lower income and would like to live in the community in, in housing if it were available. Next slide, please. To date, we have had conversations with the community. Back in mid-February, we had two focus group sessions with them that had really, really good participation, both from housing providers, service providers in the community, as well as developers and, and property owners and people who are members of homeowners associations. And we asked a lot of questions about what people felt were the major housing challenges, what the housing needs in the community were, and importantly, what creative solutions might there be to meet that, the, the needs in the community? Some of the things that we heard were more streamlined processes, finding, making sure that, that the, the quality of housing endures in, in Loma Linda. So even if it's higher density housing, make sure that it, it meets the quality that's been established, the quality standard. But there is a need for affordable housing for housing for young professionals, and as I mentioned, people who would like to, to work in the community, I'm sorry, to live in the community if they're working here. And we, we've put together a summary of these stakeholder interviews. Lauren or Conrad, that may have been attached, I don't recall, to the, the staff report, to the council and commission, but if it was not, this, this information can be made available to you to take a look at. Next slide, please. The project timeline is to, and apologize, this is not entirely correct in terms of, of the, the elements that we're putting together, but as I mentioned, the, the date is to get council approval by fall of 2021 to stay on this schedule. This requires that we have a draft element ready for moving up to the state in, in June of this year, June, early July, and to, because they, they will have a 60-day review period that they, they have. And we're looking to get to the Planning Commission in September and to the council in October. And certainly, if you would like to come, if you would like us to come back to you and, and discuss this as we're moving forward, that's an opportunity that is out there to, to make sure that we're checking in and that you're comfortable with the programs and the sites that have been posed before it goes up to the state and/or while it is being reviewed by the state in the summer of this year. Next slide. With that, I would like to turn the evening back over to the Mayor and the Chair of the Planning Commission for questions and comments. And, and if you'd like us to respond to some of the comments that have come in, I keep thinking they're from Katie Nichols, but it's from John, actually, I see that. You're, you're using your wife's laptop tonight, it looks like, John.
My daughter.
Your daughter. We will go ahead and, and open it up to see if you have particular questions. And so, Mr. Mayor, I'm, I'm here and ready to, to respond.
Well, we are, as a council, we're, we're an equal team. So we're, it's open to questions from anyone here on the dais and there's no preference in order or anything like that, so.
And, Mr. Mayor, the, the audio's a little tough. I might have Conrad or Laura Reina repeat any questions that you might have. And it looks like Chair Nichols is having a difficulty hearing the mayor as well.
Okay, I'm, I'm almost eating my microphone, so I'm not sure how we can fix it. But what I was saying is that you don't, I appreciate it, but you don't need to refer back to me. We're all equal here on this council and, and questions will come up as they come up and it, it doesn't need to come through me. So that's how we focus as a council.
Okay, and, and we can now hear you pretty well now that you're kissing your microphone.
I guess maybe that was it.
Would, would you like me to address some of the questions that came in from, from Chair Nichols?
I don't, I don't see anybody. I didn't, I don't see any council members jumping up with questions, so.
Okay. The first question is whether or the, the 39% that I mentioned of housing cost burden compares to other communities. Chair Nichols, I don't have that number off the top of my head, but we can give that information to you. I, I think I can confidently say that many communities are seeing high numbers of house, cost burden where you've got lower-income households and the fact that, that housing prices have, have just not stayed down at all. But we can give that information, provide that to the Planning Commission. And then, I think the question of whether the arena was based on a city's area or population and the, the factors that go into the arena are not area or population. Most of it is whether or not you're near high-transit areas, whether or not prior commitments have been met with regard to lower-income housing, and, and really what the, the demographic makeup of the community is as well. We can provide some more information to you about all the factors that go into the arena calculation, but it's a fairly complex calculation. There was also the question that does the fact that every single-family home in California can build up to two accessory dwelling units gives us a number of, gives us a number of affordable units. Just to clarify, and, and the council will be learning more this evening about accessory dwelling units when the ordinance is presented to you as part of your public hearing process. But it is absolutely true that every single-family home in California is able to build a detached accessory dwelling unit as well as a unit interior to the home called a junior accessory dwelling unit that doesn't necessarily need to have its own bathroom. It does need to have an efficiency kitchen. So under California law today, there is the ability of any homeowner, except under very limited circumstances, to build an accessory dwelling unit that's detached and one interior to the unit. And in terms of the number of units that we're projecting forward for Loma Linda, it's based on how many applications have come in over the last number of years. So it's, it's, it's based on trends and not necessarily some theoretic, theoretical capacity. And so when I, I can come back and give you that, the, the number that we'll be using just off the top of my head. I think it's about 139. The question, Chair Nichols, is can community development fees be charged disproportionately to very low and low-income development if their burden on city services can be demonstrated? In order to charge development fees, the city does have to do a NEXUS study, and those NEXUS studies need to prove what the burdens are. And so that's a complicated process. I'll just let you know that the legislature is considering several bills right now that may affect the, the development fee. that may affect the, the development fees that, that cities can, can charge. So, those are bills moving through the legislature that you, you might want to pay attention to. Mr. Mayor, there was a question from a member of the public in the chat that asked what the impacts of, what are the impacts of student housing needs? Student housing needs, it, it's, you know, it's, it's a real demand and a real impact, but housing law doesn't look at it in, in any type of coordinated manner. It's, it, for example, if you're looking at what a demand is, if a student is, as part of the census is registering that they actually live someplace else, that local demand of that student is not recognized. And also, any housing that Loma Linda University or any other institution provides is specifically for students is not reflected in the RENA. So, it's almost an internal demand that's recognized. So, that, that's something that's, hasn't been addressed in the law, but there you have it. And so, those are all of the questions that we have in the chat right now. I want to see if there are other questions from, from any members of the council or planning commission.
Real quick, a follow-up question to the state law you talked about, about the ADU units. Does that supersede, obviously, probably, local ordinance or, or city ordinance? And then also HOAs?
It, it supersedes both. The question is, does the, the state's ADU requirement supersede us, local regulations and/or HOA requirements? Yes, it supersedes both specifically. And, and so, as you'll, you'll see during your hearing coming up, the city's hands are pretty well tied with regard to what you can do for accessory dwelling units.
Councilman Daley has some questions.
I'd like to start broad and, and just be sure that I'm, I'm tracking the requirements and our status accurately. First of all, when you say this is a, a housing requirement and you've applied it to Southern California, I assume that includes communities like Beverly Hills, Brentwood, Santa Monica?
Yes, everybody.
Interesting. They'll have a bigger challenge than we do then, I believe. At 39%, are we currently in compliance with the standards that we're expected to have attained or not?
There is no standard with regard to housing cost burden. That's simply a number that I've presented to you to recognize kind of the disconnect between what people are earning and what housing costs are in Loma Linda and that, and that there is a, a, a challenge in being able to afford housing at, at, that's no more than 30% of the household income.
Is that a metric that the state looks at in evaluating our status?
I, I'm sorry, could you repeat that?
Is that a metric that the state would be looking at in evaluating our status in terms of compliance with law?
They, they would look at it and ask what programs are part of the housing element to begin to address the, the cost burden? Are there other things besides providing opportunity for, for developers to build more affordable housing? Are there any other programs that the city might put forward to try to address that? So, they won't hold it against you, per se, but it will be something they would look at.
Are there metrics that they look at that we should be aware of?
The key metrics are your RENA and what, what the housing element is doing to show capacity for the RENA.
I, I don't understand what that means, you need to explain that.
Okay, I apologize. They are, the, the state will be looking at, does, has the city established enough land use capacity through its zoning to accommodate not just the 2051 units, but the units at the various income categories? So, do you have enough land zoned for higher-density housing to accommodate affordable units? That's going to be the, the key metric, is can you provide, can you demonstrate zoning to meet the, the, the need that's been identified for just over 2,000 units?
And when you say 2,000 units, is that what we need to provide in addition to what we have already provided at this point? Or I'm trying to understand where that came from?
That number means as of essentially Ju-, the end of June of, of this year, because that's when the planning period starts. Can the city show capacity on vacant sites, on sites that might be redeveloped, and on projects that are approved or are under construction? All combined, moving forward, is there capacity for 2,151 units?
Okay, that's helpful, but it still doesn't tell me where we are relative to the 2,000. We need 2,000 additional units to what we've already provided? Because we've retired on this.
Yeah, 2,000 units against the baseline of what exists on the ground today.
Okay, okay, that's what I was afraid you were going to say. I have questions about accessory units, and, and let me try to explain that. I mean, you, you also described them as granny flats. And the photograph you showed looked like somebody just kind of added a cement pad and, and built a little extension to their house, and that was eligible as an accessory unit. Did I interpret that correctly?
That is, yes, that is another way that somebody could provide a accessory dwelling unit. It could, it can be either attached or detached to the, the main structure. If it's attached, it has to have a, its own independent entrance.
So, if we can move into internal accessory units. And to be personal, I have a 100, soon-to-be 101-year-old mother-in-law that is, is in one of our larger bedrooms in our house. Now, she has, she's financially independent and pays this rent and all that stuff. Does that qualify?
Does she have an, an efficiency kitchen?
No.
Then that would not qualify as a junior accessory dwelling unit.
Okay, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think the only way this can really go and, and this, these junior accessory units are really just converted garages, correct?
Actually, probably more converted bedrooms. A converted garage would be more like, depending on, on how it's outfitted, if it's, if it's got its own bathroom and its own kitchen, be it efficiency or otherwise, that would be considered a, an attached accessory unit.
What is a, define a kitchen to me for an accessory unit?
For a, I, this, you know what might be helpful? Is if some of those questions could be carried over to the public hearing?
Sure.
Process, because we'll have a full presentation on accessory dwelling units and have our expert ADU person making that presentation.
Okay, that's, that's fair enough. And my, my final question for now at least is, what is the penalty? Well, first, what is the deadline for us to have these additional 2,000 units available?
The, the only deadline that the city has right now is to adopt the housing element that shows the capacity for those units by October 15th of this year. The city is under no obligation to ensure that those units are built, because that's out of your control, that's what the, the private market takes care of. Every year, the city does file what's called an annual progress report with the state to show progress towards goals. At this point in time, there is no penalty whatsoever for not making progress towards those goals.
So, if we didn't really make, and, and I'm being facetious now, but just to ask the question in the extreme, if we weren't able to make much progress until 2035, that would be okay. I, I'm not suggesting that's where we're going, I'm just asking the question.
Well, actually, you're going to have to do this again in 2029. So, you're not going to be able to get to 2035. Eight, eight years from now, you're going to have to go through the process again, and your number might be something different than 2051.
Okay. And, and for now, my, my final question, I don't promise I won't have more, but what is, if we get to 2029, what is the penalty for non-compliance?
There, the only non-com, there, there's two, two things which would make the city non-compliant. The first would be to not have your element adopted on time. The second would be, and this, I apologize, this gets a little nerdy. But let's say, for example, the city has zoned properties and designated them as appropriate for lower-income housing. Some, a developer comes in and decides they don't want to build lower-income housing, they want to build market rate housing. The city has to show that it has capacity to still accommodate the same number of affordable, lower-income housing. If not, that's when you might be penalized, because you, you are no longer compliant. Your, your housing element would fall out of compliance, because you've lost your capacity.
And what constitutes the penalty?
What the penalty does, it, for a, a city that is non-compliant, a, a couple of things here. The city would not be eligible for certain grants and loans for housing.
From the state?
From the state. The city would be open to lawsuit for having a non-compliant housing element. The city of Huntington Beach was sued a couple of years ago on that grounds in an extraordinarily extreme case of all development could stop, because a judge could rule the city does not have a, a, a legal general plan. I, I do not know of any case where that has happened, but I do know of cases where, where cities have been sued for having a non-compliant housing element.
No, I appreciate your response. I'm, I'm not pursuing that as a goal, but I like to understand the worst-case scenario. That's what I have for now.
I have two questions. First question, so we mentioned that we have 39% of households in Loma Linda that have housing burden. Is that expected to increase into 2029?
We, I, I don't know the answer to that, we have not done that analysis yet.
Got it, do we know what it was 10 years ago?
I, yes, we could go back and look that up, or actually, I could, I could look that up from your prior, your last two prior housing elements, would, would have that number, what the housing cost burden and, and what the trend has been.
Got it. And then my second question, so so our estimated RENA 2051 and then our total RENA number. I, I know there's a lot of calculations that go behind this, but just in like two, three sentences, why is Loma Linda's higher than all its neighboring cities? I know you mentioned that cities that are transit cities are usually higher. Does Loma Linda fall into a transit city? Or is it another attribute that makes our percentage of RENA higher than, say, Redlands or Highland?
I would need to go back and dig into the, the methodology that, that calculated it, but I, I, I think the two things that probably contribute to that are the fact that you've got the rapid, the bus rapid transit lines, and also, you've got a fairly high jobs-to-housing ratio, meaning you've got proportionally a lot more jobs than housing than, than surrounding communities might, which other communities might be housing-rich instead of jobs-rich. And so, in order to meet regional goals to better balance, to, to reduce how far people are driving, the, the whole thought is to put, you know, housing and jobs closer to each other. And so, that, that might go into the calculus for Loma Linda.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, it looks like Commissioner Kropenko has a question.
Go ahead, we, we can't, we can't see that part of the Zoom, so you're going to have to just moderate for us.
Okay.
My, my question was from leading, reading the last housing element was that, I, my understanding is that we were short, so they're, they were tagging some on to this time, is my understanding, from reading the last housing element that Lorena posted on the city website. Is that correct?
No, that, that did not go into the, the designation of the city's RENA at all. Everybody's numbers were so much higher this time than, than last time. Every city throughout the six county, the five, uh, six-county SCAG region.
But my question is, is we didn't, is it correct that we didn't meet our goal for the last time? We were short on our, on going to RENA, we were short on our obligation? So, they have tagged those along into this next session?
No, no, that, that is not how, how they, they've done it. Two-thirds of the RENA for the entire region was based up, was based on pent-up demand for housing. So, it's not just Loma Linda, it was every jurisdiction in the six-county SCAG region that wasn't having housing built. And so, there, two, two-thirds of that number, that 1.3 million, is essentially pent-up demand from every city in every county.
Okay, I have one other question. Do you know if the RENA body has looked at the trend that's changed our whole world as in the COVID in 2020?
Yes, I went through the process of sitting through hours and hours of RENA appeals in, in early January of this year. And a lot of cities were appealing on the grounds of, of that COVID was placing burdens. And that consideration, that was not a consideration, because it's something that affected everybody equally.
Was, do you know if there was a discussion about an exodus of California for a lot of residents?
There, that was not part of the discussion, although I, if some, if folks looked at some recent LA Times articles, is that people aren't really moving out of California as much as they are moving away from the coastal areas to more affordable places inland. So, it hasn't been so much an exodus from California, it's been an exodus from San Francisco and, and expensive areas to, to more affordable areas, since people can work from home.
That's, yeah, it's interesting, because Loma Linda looks, is actually, looks like affordable housing for some people from this, moving from other cities.
I would not disagree with that.
I, I see, we're, we see bits and pieces of the chat kind of displayed up here on the screen. I see somebody, I'm not sure if it was Larry or not, asked a question about, wasn't our city non-compliant last term? We actually have been compliant with our RENA numbers for a while. The, the problem is the, the RENA folks redo the numbers. And like when they just did them here recently, it put us pretty far behind, but not in comparison to some of the other cities, which have, you know, upwards of four or five times the amount that we do. So, I guess it's all relative, but we have always been ahead of our requirements here and, and have done our due diligence in that term, so. That's more of a comment than anything, but I'm not sure if we're going to continue. One more question, and then I think we're going to go into the city council meeting.
I'm, I'm looking for a take-home message. We, we face this again in 2029, correct?
Yes.
What would you suggest should be our housing element goal before 2029 in order to ensure that we're, you know, proceeding appropriately?
That's a really interesting question, and I think it's, it's something that both the commission and the council will, will need to discuss. We will put forward some recommended programs, but I think that some of the key, key goals will be to, to meet those, those theoretical housing needs in the community, be it for more affordable housing and perhaps for, for any special needs housing. Is, is there a particular need for senior housing or for young families? And once we have all the demographic information put forward, what are the most pressing needs? And, and can the city meet, ensure that those are addressed as part of the housing element?
Okay, and then my next question is to the mayor.
Okay, and then my next question is to the mayor, and that is, what is, what is, what do we do next? What are, this is on, obviously, this is a pre-session, what happens from here?
Uh, this is mostly informational, and, and so, uh, uh, we will move into our council meeting, we do have an item, agenda item related to those accessory dwelling units. Uh, so we'll cover that, and we'll probably just summarize the workshop, I don't know if the city attorney will do that, or the assistant city manager will do that.
Just, just to answer, we'll steal Laura's microphone. Just to answer very quickly, this is informational only, so there's no action required. And then, uh, as the housing element process progresses, it will come back to both Planning Commission and the City Council for final review and approval before it goes to the state.
Okay, thank you, and, uh, thank you for everyone that participated online. I know we had some minor technical challenges, but, uh, it sounds like everybody was able to, uh, to participate in, in here part of it, so, uh, we'll wait and see what comes before us in the coming months. So with that being said, we will open this city council meeting. Uh, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Thank you.
Sorry, Dusty.
Councilman Gendal. Councilman Leonard.
Here.
Councilman Rigsby, thank you. Mayor Prettemory Daley.
Here.
Mayor Duper.
Present.
Thank you, we have a corner.
Thank you very much. Yes. We're gonna pause for some more technical updates. Okay. The city council did meet in closed session earlier this evening. Um, I'll ask the city attorney to report on that real quick.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. The city council met in closed session, and the item listed on the agenda was a litigation matter. The council received a report on the status, and there was no action to report at this time.
Thank you, sir. Also, after our closed session, the council met with the Planning Commission in a joint workshop, um, discussing our, um, housing element and general plan. Uh, there was nothing to report back on that, as that is part of a series of ongoing meetings and, uh, part of the planning process. So with that being said, we will start the evening with the invocation of Pledge of Allegiance, and I will lead those. If you would, please stand with me. Dear Father in Heaven, uh, thank you again for allowing us to come together to discuss matters of interest in our community. Please guide and direct our thoughts and our actions tonight as we hear and see items before us. Please protect our families and our friends and, uh, guide and direct us as a country. We thank you for all your blessings, in your name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. City Manager, are there any items to be added or deleted?
No, sir.
Is there anybody in the public that wishes to comment about a non-agendized item? As become our practice here for the year of COVID, I will look over to IT and I wait for them to signal either A or nay. Nobody, okay. If we have any conflicts of interest, those will come up as necessary, otherwise we will move into our first scheduled item. And this actually is a presentation for our longtime Finance Director, Treasurer Diana Deanda, uh, who just retired. And, uh, unfortunately, she is under the weather tonight, so she was not able to join us. Um, but I will show you the commemorative lamp that, uh, the city got for her. Yes. She didn't quite make it to the rocking chair, but, but she got the lamp.
The bulb wasn't included.
No, the bulb is not included. No, Jarb, no, 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 that, that's too expensive, Jarb couldn't, couldn't do that. Uh, so, uh, unfortunately, she could not make it, but we're, we're gonna present this. Uh, Jarb will give it to her a little later on, maybe she can come back for another council meeting. Say our goodbyes and take some pictures with her, because she has been a, a staple of our family for a long time. Uh, one of the other, uh, one of the other things that we tentatively are going to have is, uh, our, our local Congressman Pete Aguilar is going to join us to talk about, um, the COVID relief bill that is currently, um, waking its, making its way through, uh, through the Washington establishment, but I'm not sure he is ready or, or with us yet, so. Uh, I know he had some other meetings, and so they're gonna let us know, we may have to interrupt some of our other business. So that was item number two, we'll get to that as we can. Item number three is a public hearing, and this is what we alluded to a little bit earlier, uh, on the amendment to the municipal code to establish regulations for accessory dwelling units and junior accessory dwelling units. I'm assuming, uh, Ms. Lorena?
Good evening, Mayor Duper, council members, and members of the public watching online. My name is Lorena Matarita, I am the Associate Planner for the City of Loma Linda. So for the past few months or so, probably even more, we've been working with MIG consultants, the same consultants that just did the presentation for the housing element. And they're also the same consultants that helped worked with the OneMap system and other numerous other, um, advanced planning projects. So I really feel like they have a good understanding of the needs, the goals, as well as the culture in Loma Linda. And they've been the one to, that we've been working on to create this new accessory and junior accessory dwelling unit ordinance. Now, I'm not the one being, going to do the presentation tonight, it's actually going to be Ms. Anne Fox. And I'm going to find out if she's ready, is she ready, Angela? She is not ready. But this is going to be a new chapter in our development code, so once we get your final approval, did go before Planning Commission, and once we get your approval, hopefully, tonight or at the second reading, this will be included in the new development code and available for the public to use. Okay, so without further ado, I am going to invite Anne Fox to the virtual podium.
Thank you, Lorena. Good evening, members of the city council. And as Lorena indicated, I'm Anne Fox, I'm in MIT as well. And I'd like to provide you a brief overview of the proposed Development Code Amendment that's offered at the this evening. Uh, next slide, please. Thank you. Over the past couple of years, the state legislature has adopted a number of laws in order to address the statewide housing prices. The intent of the new law is to address the shortage of housing units by value base to reduce the costs and the length of time required to gain approvals and permits and for the development and thereby increase the housing production. Many of the new laws focused on ready-to-developing units within existing residential neighborhoods and, and zoning districts. Uh, next slide. Specifically, uh, cities must establish and implement regulations to allow accessory dwelling units and in certain cases, junior accessory dwelling units in all areas of the city where residential development, whether it's single-family or multi-family, allow. The Development Code Amendment before you this evening creates a new and separate chapter to the city zoning code um, that is specific to these types of units and subject to certain development standards. Um, the, uh, the city's regulations, however, um, have to allow for an accessory dwelling unit that is up to eight hundred square feet in size, sixteen feet in overall height with four-foot rear inside door setup. And, and this is, uh, being coined, uh, the statewide as accessory dwelling unit. And the new zoning code chapter before you contains a provision to ensure that, um, there is no conflict with city's regulations and state regulations. Uh, the chapter also codifies a procedural approval process, which is an unrequiring of state. Uh, next slide. There are a few distinctions between accessory dwelling units and junior accessory dwelling units. And an accessory dwelling unit, uh, must be completely independent, and it has to have its own kitchen and bathroom. Accessory dwelling units, um, can be attached, completely detached, and are also allowed to be created within existing structures. Uh, they must be allowed in all zones where residence, uh, residential developments allow, and it includes both the single-family zones and the multi-family zones. The city, um, is, however, allowed to limit the unit size. Uh, and so the new chapter will limit accessory dwelling units to a max of eight hundred fifty square feet for up to one bedroom and a thousand square feet for two bedrooms. Accessory dwelling is, um, are required to provide, um, one additional parking space unless, um, there are certain exceptions that were made under the state law, um, such as proximity retirement. Uh, next slide. The, uh, junior accessory dwelling units are unique, um, in that they are limited to being created in a single-family home, and they shall have an efficiency kitchen, um, but they may share a bathroom. Uh, they can't be created as part of or, and is anything to do with, uh, within a multi-family home. They are also limited, um, in size to five hundred square feet. They are not subject to providing additional parking spaces. However, if a converted garage, and I, I heard this in the earlier session, this was came up. And there is a provision that if in existing, um, garage spaces that are required to serve a single-family home, if they're converted to have a little space to create the junior accessory dwelling unit, in that particular circumstance, the replacement of those lost spaces would be required, uh, in kind. Uh, next slide. So the proposed Development Code Amendment is necessary for the city's local apartments in line with the state law, and it will also provide city staff and property owners with a clear understanding of what is allowed in the city. Uh, therefore, both your, your, your staff, your city staff and the Planning Commission is recommending the council adopt the proposed ordinance, um, that has been drafted and attached to your staff report to create this new zoning chapter, um, very specific to accessory dwelling units and junior accessory dwelling units. And I guess just the last slide is, uh, just to let you know that should, uh, any of you have, um, additional questions that we need to answer, both yourself as well as your city staff are, of course, available. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Before we open to the public comment, I'll, I'll ask if there's any questions from the council. Yes, Dr. Daley?
Question that I asked the previous presenter, can you define an efficiency kitchen for me?
Um, actually, it is defined, uh, there's a definition section, um, as part of the new ordinance, and I guess I could
Just, just give me a layman's description.
Well, basically, it needs to have a safe with a functioning drain, and so in other words, it's, uh, it, you know, it, it has to have running water, uh, that's, that's the simple way of saying. And the cooking appliances that are provided, um, they can't require natural gas, propane, um, or an electrical, um, service connection that's, that's rated at a hundred and twenty volts. Um, there has to be a dedicated area, a certain counter area, and to prep your food, and then there needs to be, um, some storage cabinets. And this basically is derived from, um, state housing law.
Okay.
And, uh, what that defines as, as an efficiency kitchen, so, um, and it may be, the thing that primarily is, is the fact that there are no, uh, extraordinary, I guess, um, hookups for the appliances to be able to function.
Okay, thank you, that's helpful. Uh, the second question, and I may be opening up Pandora's Box here, but over the years, and it happened recently, again, we have, um, three or four-bedroom homes that are rented out to students, and that's not so much the issue as parking. I've had complaints from people, now one from the street I live on, that there are two-car garages or three-car garages with five or six cars parked on the street outside from them. So help me understand what the parking regulation is in this.
And for accessory dwelling units, um, well, you, you have your, obviously, required purpose for a single-family home. So when you're describing three or four of them, um, I'm, you know, the garage spaces typically are certainly parking, you know, in general for the home, whether that's based on the building count, size of the, and, you know, single-family home, et cetera. And that's sort of separate, if you will, from the accessory dwelling itself. And the accessory dwelling unit, and
So is parking on the street appropriate parking for an accessory cottage or whatever you call it?
Yeah, an accessory dwelling unit, and this is different than a junior accessory dwelling unit. Junior accessory dwelling units, um, because they have to be created within the home, and the most common form is a converted bedroom that has, uh, you know, the efficiency kitchen attitude and it's sharing a bath. That, that's a very common junior accessory dwelling unit, is that bedroom, if you will, already existed, and the way the state law was written, that junior unit then doesn't necessarily require another parking space.
So parking on the street would be appropriate?
In junior accessory dwelling, yes.
Yeah.
If it's a separate accessory dwelling unit where it's, it's fully independent and provided with a full kitchen, a full bathroom, um, living area as well as bathrooms and sleeping areas, then if it's its own unit, then it must provide at least one, um, parking space. The, um, and that would need to be on property, on site, but it can be moved right away, it can be attached to space.
Yeah, yeah.
And so it doesn't necessarily require it to be a garage, uh, or a carport.
Okay. Well, it's, uh, um, it, it's an issue that's been around for a long time. Uh, certainly in the eleven years I've been on the council. Uh, but it's bubbling to the surface again, and that is, uh, houses, go ahead.
I was just gonna, uh, interject for just a second, the, the scenario where it's, um, multiple color students renting a four-bedroom home, they're recognized really as a, as a household unit, if you will, and so the party that's there is the party that's there, and is, is there for, you know, first-hand, or certain, whether it's a family occupying all four of those bedrooms or students. So I don't think that the state law was about it differently. The, the difference would be is if each of those bedrooms, so if only one of them can be commonly junior accessory dwelling, in other words, a single-family home theoretically could have one accessory dwelling unit, but it's a totally independent unit, and it could be a parking space versus, um, one of the bedrooms being converted into a junior accessory dwelling unit. So in other words, you couldn't have four junior accessory dwelling units.
Right, right.
In, in one home.
Well, and I think I, we may be talking apples and oranges, because, uh, the, the parking issue I do not believe is related to accessory, uh, building or junior accessory. Uh, it's just people packing into a house and everybody's got a car. But, uh, it's something we'll have to deal with at some point. But thank you.
Okay, any other questions? I can tell you I'm already planning my mother-in-law's, uh, we're, we call them casitas here, we just like that, it's a, it's a, it's a better term. But, uh, okay, uh, we'll open the public comment. Any members of the public wishing to speak on this? Please signal via your Zoom hand. All right, seeing none, we're gonna close the public comment and entertain a motion for the first reading. Okay, we have a first.
Mayor, there's also the environmental determination part of that. On the staff report, the staff report is to determine the sequo exemption and then introduce on first reading, set second reading, and adopt.
Does the maker incorporate items one and two from the staff report?
Yes.
Okay, sounds good, still looking for a second. We have a second. Madam clerk.
Thank you. The motion is to determine that the subject amendment to the municipal code is exempt from SEQA and to introduce on first reading Council Bill Number O dash twenty twenty-one dash zero five, an ordinance to amend the municipal code to establish regulations for accessory dwelling units and junior accessory dwelling units. Councilman Jindal?
Aye.
Councilman Leonard?
Yes.
Councilman Rixby?
Yes.
Mayor Pertemoree Daley?
Aye.
And Mayor Duper?
Yes, ma'am.
And it passes, thank you.
Thank you very much. We have the consent calendar.
Move it.
First and a second. Madam clerk.
Could I just, sorry, I had a mouthful of sandwich. The fiber optic conduit, nine A, fiber optic conduit improvement at Mountain View Avenue, is the fiber optic still primarily focused on Loma Linda businesses and not households? Because I get asked this question.
Correct, and, but this one is particularly for the well site, but right now, the overall fiber optic in Loma Linda is for businesses.
Okay, thank you.
So it's for, not even for, like, within Loma Linda ground, right? It's for the ones in San Bernardino?
Pardon me?
It's for the ones in San Bernardino, right?
Correct, correct, yes.
We're getting closer and closer to the airport, though. That's the goal.
And we utilize the section that IVDA is doing right now between the railroad track and the county flood control, so they put that in for us, and we just connect to it. And after we're done, they will pave the street and widen the street.
Thank you.
Whenever we have a well, it's Loma Linda. It's a pocket of Loma Linda. It's a donut hole.
Still county.
No, it's Loma Linda. It's a Loma Linda donut hole in the donut of San Bernardino.
You're calling it the donut hole. I thought you were talking about the donut hole in Redlands.
No, not the donut hole, it's our donut.
Yes, our donut hole.
It's our hole in the San Bernardino donut.
Our vegan, blue zone, healthy donut.
Yeah, it's our embassy.
Madam clerk, you can go ahead.
I have, I have one other question, I'm sorry.
No, 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 problem.
Since I kind of raised this issue, the thirteen-two for replacing tennis court lighting, how long do we estimate that'll probably take?
Probably take about just two months, because we have to order the light.
Yeah.
And then we have to rent the lift and replace all the head. Yes.
Okay, so two months, I just need to communicate that to the people that raised the issue.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And the funny thing is, we have been planning for this, planned to bring it to the city council, it just happened you asked, so.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Okay.
And can I confirm who made the second?
I believe it was Dr. Leonard.
Who made the first?
Dr. Rixby.
Thank you, my apologies. And the motion is to approve the items on the consent calendar. Councilman Jindal?
Aye.
Councilman Leonard?
Aye.
Councilman Rixby?
Yes.
Mayor Pertemoree Daley?
Aye.
Mayor Duper?
Yes, ma'am.
And it also appears that Congressman Aguilar is available on Zoom.
Okay. So we will dispense with our consent calendar via that vote, and we'll go back to item number two, I think it was, and welcome Congressman Pete Aguilar to discuss the COVID relief funding.
Good evening, Mayor Duper, appreciate the opportunity. Good evening, Loma Linda and members of the council. I appreciate, sorry, I missed my spot in line, and we can all blame Montana for keeping me past time, but thank you for the opportunity. I just wanted to give you a little bit of a quick update about the American Rescue Plan as your council agenda mentions the local impact of front estimates and timing that will be associated with it. We have a conference call that the city manager participated in weeks ago where we talked a little bit about this, and I want it for the benefit of a round act meeting, an official meeting, to convey to the full council where we are. Tomorrow morning, the House of Representatives will pass the final version of the American Rescue Plan, which is the President Biden's plan to address the twin crises that we have, the economic and the local health crisis, and state level assistance has been a significant component of that. I've been an advocate of state level funding as a part of the prior packages, and we're not able to get that down. We were able to get that done this time. In addition to this three hundred fifty billion for state-level governance, this package has direct contributions of fourteen hundred dollars for individuals, for middle-class individuals and their dependents in their household. This also allocates additional money toward vaccine distribution, which is needed, and our community allies, our local hospitals and county public health have been doing a very good job of that. This will speed along those efforts for vaccine distribution to make sure more residents have access to COVID nineteen vaccine. The third amendment is making sure children can go back to school, and from our perspective, making sure that there are no cost barriers to school districts exercising rule control to make the local decisions one of those best for the communities, making sure that there will go financial drawbacks, so that they're not making decisions based on the lack of financial need, so our local school districts receive funding for that as measured. And the last is making sure that people go back to work, and part of that is protecting essential workers like those that work for the city and the city operations to ensure that they are being held. Many communities have suffered sales tax reductions as a result of declining economic activity based on the pandemic. This gives us an opportunity to plug a little bit of that gap, as well as making sure that the city is protected moving forward. The Loma Linda share of the dollars that are within the American Rescue Plan are four point six million, and from a timing perspective, as a non-entitled city, Loma Linda will receive the contribution within thirty days of state receiving funds. The state will be required to pass these funds down without taking in interest rate fees associated with it. I remember from my local government days that we're always fearful of that. The state will receive these funds within sixty days of enactment, so within sixty days of the President signing it, the state will receive the money, Loma Linda will receive their share within thirty days after that. So roughly within ninety days after enactment, Loma Linda will receive their first share, which would be fifty percent of those funds. The balance, the additional fifty percent, would be the city will receive twelve months from now. So I know this is the time of year when you're looking at your fiscal year budgets, so this would give you an opportunity to plan, not only for the inclusion within this fiscal year, but also the next fiscal year. Again, four point six million, so two point three million this fiscal year, two point three million the next fiscal year. Unlike previous versions, this doesn't have to go specific to PPE or direct COVID, mitigating COVID costs, so this could be a little bit more expansive to cover some of the sales tax deficiencies that local community might have, or to create a new program that identifies need in the community as well. So those would be, that would be the report. Mr. Mayor, I would only ask that when the city identifies what you're going to be using these funds for, that maybe you look at, you mean, a simple, one-page communication item in thirty, sixty, ninety days, as these awards are being allocated, just so we communicate to the public exactly what these federal resources went for, what services they protected, and which programs were enhanced as a result of, or service levels enhanced as a result of the funds. Additionally, Congress is talking about creating another opportunity through community grants and community programs similar to what cities and agencies used in years past in order to allocate funds locally. So this would be separate from the COVID rescue package, but we might be looking to the city to have conversations or to help us prioritize needs that you see that could be eligible, grants and projects that we could advocate for. So my office will take the lead on that, Kurt Lewis in our office handles some of our grants and making sure that our local agencies and nonprofits are eligible for potential grants. This would be a new pot of funds potentially that would be ongoing in a year-by-year process where we could advance projects and priorities for our communities, but at some point, we might come back, ask Loma Linda to advocate for priorities with us or to prioritize some of these projects with us to demonstrate community. They would not be eligible, they could not be used for for-profit entities or anything like that, but local public agencies, including the city, local nonprofits, that help our communities, those would be eligible expenses. So again, it's a separate from the American Rescue Plan, that's from the Congress, so we'll get a non-working perspective, how we can be helpful in directing these federal resources back home. California sends more resources than we receive to the federal treasury. My job has been to advocate to bring some of those back home to our communities. I take that a little serious, and as someone who is sad at some of those chairs of local government, I know that some of the needs are very significant, so being advocates is for our communities to help draw down some of these resources. It's been something my office has a lot of time with. So with that, Mr. Mayor, I'm happy to take any questions, and I appreciate the opportunity to make a presentation.
Thank you very much, thank you for taking the time out of your day, and I'm sure you've been making the rounds, so it's probably been a long day for you. Looking around at the diastasy, do we have any questions? Okay, I don't see anybody jumping up, but thank you very, very much for representing us and representing our community, our country, and we appreciate the effort and hard work.
Thank you so much, Mayor, I appreciate it, and feel free to reach out if there are any needs that you guys have, or we need to talk a little bit more about this, and your city manager knows how to find us as well, and happy to continue to partner and work with you. So thank you so much for the time this evening, and enjoy your meeting.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to old business. Yes, sir.
It's a lot of money, and we've thought about how we're gonna use it.
Well, first of all, this is a one-time money, so.
Well, they're in two installments.
Correct, and, like you mentioned earlier, we have a lot of loss reduction in our sale tax revenue.
Yeah, yeah.
This fiscal year, and probably, I'm not sure, carried on to next fiscal year or not. So it's gonna be one-time money, so the first thing I thought about is the surplus that we have from last year, one million dollars, I would like to pay that down, our unfunded liability, and maybe part of this, we can help pay that down, but also part of it could be improvement to the city hall, city facility, because it's one-time money, and so.
Yeah, the one thing I didn't, we didn't, I didn't ask, and he may have mentioned it, I might have missed it, we're encouraged to use this, correct? We can't put it in the bank?
Correct, well.
Because I would imagine probably a lot of places will go out and spend, 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 but maybe.
Well, no, I would not go spend, 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 I will keep it as part of reserve too, so, but, but I'd be happy to bring it back and present it to the full council, so.
It's easy to save money, you just spend that money on your program and take the money you were gonna spend on that and put it in the bank, so you can always shovel things around. But my question is, how much unfunded mandate do we have left? And I know it's a slippery number.
Yes, last time it was about six and a half million. It was six million, but with a six at the interest rate of seven and a quarter percent, the interest, annual interest is about four hundred eighty thousand dollars. So again, the goal is to reduce the principal, so reduce the interest rate, interest. So my goal is, within four, five year, I would like to pay this off.
From a practical standpoint, where our sales tax sits right now, that probably doesn't cover all of our sales tax. Yeah. Our sales tax has been hit extremely hard in the first two quarters. We're looking at the second and then the third, or the, sorry, the third and the fourth quarter, because we got a report in late. It's very possible that at least the first installment would not even cover our deficit in sales tax.
It went down by twenty-six percent the last, the third quarter, and like thirty-some percent down on the second quarter.
So this isn't, this isn't found money that, we've got stuff to do with, this really is to put a finger in the dikes so that we don't have to eliminate services and cuts and make cuts.
I guess I'm not surprised, but I hadn't actually heard the hit that we've taken in sales tax because of this pandemic.
It's very significant, and, well, fuel is a big part of our sales, and obviously, you know, fuel prices are down to, you know, to record lows.
Yeah.
Transit occupancy tax is a big part of our revenue, hotels are empty because of COVID, and then the reduction in sales throughout the city across the board, and those are our three major revenue sources. So we've been hit on each, each possible revenue source that COVID could have been us.
Wow, like.
It really is plugging a hole, at least the first installment.
What I wanted to ask the congressman, but prudently decided not to, was, was this money, was it, could it be better termed funny money or monopoly money that they've printed and shoveled our direction? Because there's no borrowing from anybody to create this, it was just fiat currency created in the Federal Reserve out of nothing. So it's essentially Bitcoin with a, with a spread eagle on it.
Yeah, kind of like the tax cut we got a few years ago, same thing.
I agree.
Okay, well, let's, let's move on and into our old business, which was Council Bill R dash two zero two-one dash zero seven, establishing the membership for the Historical Commission and finalize appointments.
So, are we receiving a presentation?
I think we're, I think we ought to summarize it.
Just a quick summary, this is the, expanding the membership of the Historic Commission, and then finalizing the three appointments to the commission. As permanent appointments, I think we had them as temporary, as a placeholder, and just for reference, we haven't had anything to bring before the commission since all this started, so they will all be brand-new commission members when it starts.
Do you have like a commission training program you put them through?
Yeah, they show up and have to listen to me, that's the, the pain and suffering of the training.
And remind, I recall this, remind me, we increased it from what number to what number?
Believe from nine to twelve, is that right?
From nine to eleven.
Eleven. No, there's three.
Yeah, but we had a vacancy.
Oh, we had a vacancy, yes, nine to eleven, you're correct, yeah.
Yeah. I'm, I mean, if people want to be on it, then I'm, I'm fine with that, but anytime you get a committee of more than six or seven, then it's dysfunctional, so.
But they don't show up.
Well, then they shouldn't be appointed.
Well, the people who are already there shouldn't serve if they don't show up, the people who've been appointed, we don't know if they show up yet.
Yeah, but what's the penalty for not showing up?
Well, that's why, that's why we had further discussion about putting term limits on them, so that it's not a lifetime appointment.
So ten years from now, we'll have a Historical Commission of twenty-three people because half of them don't show up.
Well, because it's, because it's the blue zone.
Yes.
They will actually.
so, anyway. Do we, do we need a motion to move it, or...
So does this resolution set terms for the others?
This does not. We need to bring terms back.
Okay.
This is just the second reading.
Then I'll move it.
Wait, it would be in the same resolution, wouldn't it? Or it would be in the same, same chapter when it's...
It'll be the same chapter, basically somewhere that, in the end of that, end of that paragraph, it'd say that, "And term limits shall be X number of years."
If you remember last council meeting, we talked about if we amended this, then we'd have to set it out again further. So I think the idea was to finish this one up, and then bring back that other idea in a separate.
Correct, correct. The idea was to close this and then bring terms as a fresh entity.
So when would we have that one?
Could have that for the next meeting.
It's like the voice from above. I'm not sure where that came from.
Was that you, Dick Weyer?
Yeah, sir.
Hey, Dick.
I was saying...
Go ahead.
...a comment to you. As far as the term limits, they are either three or four-year terms. And then when that term is up, usually the letter is sent out and said, "Would you like to continue, or would you like to resign?" And that was done every four years, so then, or what, standard years? So that if it wasn't, once you're on, you're on for life. You had a certain term for three years, and then if you still wanted to stay on, you have to...
We currently don't have term limits on that.
...because we apply. There are term limits, but...
We don't currently have term limits on... Well, it sounds like that may have been the practice, but we didn't have it codified, so I think we're going to, we're going to bring that back to look at it, so...
Okay. I just want to make sure that I heard that mention before.
Oh, yeah, yeah, thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, Dick, we did some investigation, and it may be incomplete, but it basically said that all the rest of the committees had terms, and it looked like the Historical Commission did not.
Historical did not. There may have been a letter that sent out, that sent out, you know, "Do you still want to continue on a regular basis?", but it's not, your term is over and you need to be reappointed.
Yeah, and when I say term limits, I'm not talking about, you know, you only get two terms and then you're out on your ear. I'm just talking about there need to be terms, so we have a regular reassessment. So there's a way to let someone gracefully slip off the committee for non-attendance without having to be, you know, essentially terminated.
Correct.
Term out instead of terminate.
It sounds like we're going to fix that, so do we have a motion to finalize this part of it? No, I think Dr. Riggs made a motion.
I will second it with his comment. I almost want to add to the motion that we take the video from this and bury it in a time capsule, so that people can see 50 years from now, 100 years from now, how city government worked at its finest, where we have citizens who want to be on a panel, and we've gone through, what, three different meetings on this, on trying to figure this thing out. It's just, it's amazing. It's just a volunteer thing that we, people want to be involved. We ought to just say, "Yes, be involved!", but instead, we're, you know, it's just government as is. And with that, I'll second the motion.
Madam Clerk? One more final comment? No?
No.
Okay. I still have to say, though, in terms of councils and how we all get along, I still think this is a pretty high-functioning group here.
Oh, definitely so, definitely so. That's why I brought it up, because it's out of our character.
Yeah, absolutely.
And he did mention this was the apogee of government. That's why he wanted to put it in a time capsule.
Deliberate of government, yes.
But I do have one question.
He did, I knew he did. See?
You can see it just boiling up there. So when we bring this back again next month, and we establish term limits, or whatever we're going to do, we would bring it back one more time, because then people's terms would be expiring this year, right?
It is, it is a change to the ordinance, therefore it would come back twice, just like this one, for a first reading and a second reading. So we will see this at least two more times.
Maybe three.
And then hopefully, as part of this, we will draw, draw a lot, randomly assign people that are on the two-year and the four-year, the six-year, whatever terms we determine cycle. And then you would have to also figure out who gets the two-year, who gets the four-year cycle.
And the two- or four-year cycle, would that begin this year, or would that begin...
It would begin...
2023.
I let the city attorney, I keep turning around, I'm waiting for him to stop me, but...
He's digging his foot out.
I think you would have the opportunity to say when it starts, but it could, it could just as easily start from the point you implemented, if you choose not to set a start time.
Do we have any idea how many people we have that are not showing up right now? Like, are they two, three?
You know, it, to be fair, it's been very difficult for the last year with COVID. Our Historic Commission members are typically, you know, they're all worse than the history because they lived it, so they're also dealing with the technology as a challenge, has been a challenge for them. When we were doing in-person meetings, we had about 65, 70% on a regular basis, and there was nobody that was inconsistently or consistently not there. It kind of rotated through. So these are, these are people that really are interested, they're excited about it, they want to preserve their history, and they want to be engaged. It's been very challenging for them this year.
The motion is to adopt Council Bill Number R-2021-07, Setting the Membership for the Historical Commission and Finalizing the Appointments. Counsel mentioned, Donald?
No.
Councilman Leonard?
Yes.
Councilman Riggsby?
Yes.
Mayor Prettempey-Daly?
Abstain until we get this organized.
Pardon?
Abstain.
And Mayor Duper?
Yes.
And it passes, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to item number 15, our new business, Designation of a Delegate and Alternate for the SCAG General Assembly, May 6th. I'm assuming this will also be a Zoom meeting.
Every year, I have to go to Palm Springs for SCAG annual meetings.
Not this year.
So if Councilman Jindal want to attend a Zoom meeting, and I can be happy to be alternate, so...
That works with me.
Okay, everybody's good with that? I don't think we need a motion, as long as there's a consensus. Sounds good. Okay, that will be it. Any reports of council members?
Oh, we got a complaint about stop sign. No, on Huron.
You got excited, you can take one out, huh?
Huron and Loma Linda. This is from someone who lives on Huron, close to Loma Linda, complaining about the stop sign, saying it should be going that way rather than that way. Right now, the stop sign is, as you're coming up Loma Linda and you're turning left or right, the stop sign is on Loma Linda, and the through fare is on Huron. And the person who lives on Huron is complaining about it. So I told her to talk to Mayor Riggsby, because he was the one most responsible for that stop sign change.
And he has every stop sign mapped out in the city, I believe.
He does, in his head. I told her that that made for better flow through the city, and that was the reason why it was done in the first place. But there was some concern about views and so forth, so I just thought I'd bring it up.
Can you explain views? Because there's not, because there's a blind, blind intersection?
What she was saying was that as you come up the intersection, and you try to make a left or right turn, you can't see down Huron very well.
Okay, then why, why do we allow that? Why do we allow that to happen?
I drive that every day, and I live right around the corner. The views are okay.
Yes.
There's a couple cars that kind of parked sitting out far, and you can see, okay. The biggest challenge is there's people that walk in the middle of the street.
That's true, yeah.
And the worst part on that, that particular stop sign, is just the way the dips are. People that are coming down Huron, they want, they think it should be a stop, so more often than not, somebody's just sitting there waiting for you, and they have to through traffic.
Exactly.
It's the sideline is okay there.
Yeah, I asked, how fast can people go barreling through? Because I know those dips are so huge, it actually slows them down anyway, so it actually kind of makes sense. It almost works like a slowdown.
It's a significant speed bump.
Yeah, it's an inverse speed bump.
And to place traffic control devices, you have to do a traffic study, and there's some, there's a lot of stuff that's involved in it, so it's not just put a stop sign up, but, do you want to add to it?
I'm definitely not voting for more stop signs.
Yeah. I, I got an email, and it's not that big of a deal, we could probably do it offline, but just in case anybody else had heard anything about this, about the cleanliness of the public restrooms up at Holder Crooks Park, and what, Holder Crooks? And we all know that they are heavily used, but, but there was...
Every morning.
Every morning?
Every morning.
Okay.
That's the first thing, even Saturday, even on the weekend, that's the first thing they do is clean up all of it.
Okay. Yeah, there was, there was an email about it that I got today, so I...
I have a question.
It's pretty busy. Yes, sir?
I have a question of the city attorney, and I don't want to get out of my lane here, but in reading, well, let me just ask the question first. What is the potential liability for the city when we have first responders that elect not to get vaccinated?
Well, as a general matter, I prefer not to discuss liability issues in a public meeting.
Okay.
Those are issues that we discuss with staff privately.
Okay.
But that's, that's an issue that would be of statewide concern, and something that I have not, at this point, analyzed.
Yeah, we probably ought to just leave it there.
It's an active issue, not only in first responders, but in healthcare in terms of...
But it's also a personnel issue, and so we got to be careful.
It is also that, and probably something that we would be preempted from taking any...
That we would what?
We would be preempted by whatever state regulations would apply to the...
Are there state regulations?
Well, I presume the Health Department may have looked at that issue, and I'm not familiar with what they might have determined, but that would be outside of our jurisdiction if they have.
Okay, any reports?
I don't know any more than I did before you answered me, but okay, thank you.
Reports of officers?
No, sir.
Okay. We will close the, or close the city council agenda and move on to the housing authority. Any items to be added or deleted?
No, sir.
And we have the consent calendar moved, and a second.
And the motion is to adopt the items on the housing authority consent calendar. Councilman Jindal?
Aye.
Councilman Leonard?
Aye.
Councilman Riggsby?
Yes.
Mayor Prettempey-Daly?
Aye.
Mayor Duper?
Yes.
Thank you, it passes.
Thank you. Any reports of officers or members? None. We will close the housing authority and open the successor agency. Any items to be added or deleted?
No, sir.
And we also have the consent calendar.
Ma'am.
Madam Clerk?
And the motion is to approve the items on the successor agency consent calendar. Councilman Leonard?
Aye.
Councilman Jindal?
Aye.
Councilman Riggsby?
Yes.
Mayor Prettempey-Daly?
Aye.
And Mayor Duper?
Yes.
And it passes, thank you.
Thank you. That, I think, is going to conclude our agenda for the housing, or successor agency, and that's our business for the, for the night. Thank you.
And then you'll let Deanna know that we missed her tonight, and we'll be looking for her at a future...
Deanna?
Yeah.
Is that just war, or did it actually happen? It didn't happen. I think Floyd and Norm Meyer, and probably Elmer, when they retired.
Pardon?
What is the threshold criteria?
We don't have any formal policy or threshold. Employees have been given a lamp, the rocking chair has been for retiring council members. Not those who are just not reelected, but actually retire.
She started April 1992, and then May 2000 was her time, and she came back, she was seven...